Okay. We're here today for the Dewey Beach Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Mike Harmer, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it's Friday, August 6th at 5:30 PM. And we've been here to convene the meeting and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. So... Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. All right. We have an agenda here that was posted and hadn't changed, and just looking for a motion to adopt it.
Motion.
All right. Dave Lyons, second. Jimmy O'Connor. And we'll do a roll call. Got a little bit out of order, so let's go around the room. Jimmy?
Yep, Jim Beliki.
Jim Beliki, check.
Dave Lyons.
Check. Mike Harmer.
Mark Orquist.
Check.
Jimmy O'Connor.
Check. Jimmy O'Connor. Check. All right, takes care of that. We've got the agenda adopted properly, and no meeting minutes to approve today. And so what we're going to do first is that we're going to talk, we'll do a, we'll have staff to do an introduction and propose of the proposed rezoning for 26 Bellevue Street, Dewey Beach, from, they're proposing it for, to change from RR to RB2, resort business, and to revise the comprehensive planning zoning map accordingly. So, before we get to staff introduction, the, I want to talk a little bit about today's meeting. So, today is a rezoning. It is not an application for a building, you know, or anything like that. So, we're not going to talk about that. If you make comments, you know, we're not going to address any issues, you know, like you want the trash can around back or whatever, whatever it turns out to be. So, basically, the decision to recommend this rezoning should not be based on the future use of this property. All right? You keep in mind, we are only making the recommendation to the commissioners, so it's not final. We just make a recommendation, it goes to the town commissioners meeting. So, the actual application for any use, any conditional use or anything would come back probably to us. So, the, so this rezoning application, I'll repeat myself a little bit, calls for a consideration of the appropriateness of the RB2 zoning for 26 Bellevue Street. All right? So, the proper considerations for that involve whether the uses permitted by right and the uses conditionally permitted in the RB2 zone are appropriate for 26 Bellevue Street. So, that's, that's a key aspect for us commissioners when we're considering this. You know, we're not really need, we don't need to think about what we think it might be. We need to think about the area, and is it appropriate for an RB2, you know, an RR to go to RB2 based on what's going on along Route 1 in that area, you know, around, around that property. And, and we know that, you know, things change. You know, the partial at 26 Bellevue, you know, it's not part of that current partial where there's a commercial business. And, you know, the, and if the applicant decides to inform us of their ultimate plan to consolidate the parcels and expand it, that's fine, but those plans should not be the basis of recommending approval or denial of the rezoning. So, that's pretty much set in a stage. That's like the ground rules. All right? So, at that point, you, there, we, we have in front of us this ordinance also, this draft ordinance. We'll get into that when we get down into the agenda. But let's let us, Jim or town, the town, present to us what's going on here. So, we got, Jim, you want to talk about it if you can?
At the last town council meeting...
Excuse me, sir. Let me go to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Jim Deeds, and I'm the Assistant Town Manager for Dewey Beach. At the last official town meeting, there was a request made by the applicants to rezone a property on 26 Bellevue Street, and that's tax map 334-20.18-15.00. And the request was to change that from, which is known as a residential district, excuse me, residential resort district, RR, into the resort business district, which is an RB2 district. The zoning application applicable to said parcel will be changed and amended to an RB2 should the town council agree to this after the recommendations are given to the, by the planning commission. We want to make clear that if any provision of this ordinance shall be deemed or held to be invalid or unenforceable for any reason whatsoever, then such invalid, invalidity or unenforceability shall not affect any other provision in this ordinance, which may be given effect without such invalid or unenforceable provision. And to this and the provisions of the ordinance are hereby declared to be severable. The final comment is, is to, again, this is strictly for a zoning reclassification. That is all that's before us at this point, and that's the only consideration the council needs to take.
Thank you, Jim. And I'd like to recognize Town Manager Bill Zolfer is also up here with us. So, thank you, Bill, for attending. And do you need to say anything?
No, Jim did a great job.
All right. So, pretty much self-explanatory, you guys have had the information that we emailed to you as far as the draft ordinance, which explains, you know, what we're doing. And, you know, basically, you know, we will, you know, at the end, after we do the public hearing, we'll talk about the ordinance and the two actions that are in it. It's, you know, basically the recommendation of a rezoning, and then the comprehensive planning zoning map needs to be changed also. And that's self-explanatory on what was publicly posted on the website, as well as in the draft ordinance that we will talk about after we go through the public hearing. Any comments, Jim?
No, not right now.
All right, Dave?
None.
None from me?
None.
Jimmy, none? Okay. So, with that being said, we're going to go ahead and go to open the public hearing. We're going to keep the, keep the planning and zoning commissioners' discussion open so that we can have dialogue. And the public, the, so the public hearing being open, I'll read to receive comment on the proposed ordinance that was posted for rezoning the partial located 26 Bellevue Street. Further identified as what Jim, Jim Deeds said, TMP 334-20.18-150.00, with the current designation of resort residential RR to resort business RB2, and to revise the comprehensive planning zoning map. What, if the public's okay with that, we'd like the applicant to do a little presentation just so we have a full, you know, best understanding, and then we'll do, see people who are for, for it or against it. I guess that's how we'll go, like, an order like that, or against and for, one or the other. So, is the applicant here?
We are here.
All right. Can you name yourself and what's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Glenn Mandalas. I'm an attorney with Air Mandalas Brockstead, and I do represent the applicant who is Starboard Claw Land Company, LLC. We have here tonight with us, or this afternoon slash evening, Mr. Steve Montgomery, known better as Monty. We also have Mr. Keith Kirk, known affectionately as Toasty. Couple housekeeping things to get started. It was interesting to hear Mr. Deeds read the provision from the ordinance, because I used to be the town attorney years ago, and I think I authored that language, and I'm happy to see that it's remained, you know, on the ordinances.
You will have credit for it.
Thank you for that. I also have to mention that I think this is the first time I've ever presented an application not in a suit and tie. Monty said he'd fire me if I came here in anything that looked like a suit or a tie. So, don't be, no disrespect intended.
Yeah, no problem.
So, Starboard Claw, as you mentioned, is the contract purchaser of 1816 Coastal Highway. That's, that's the property where Hammerheads is currently located on the corner of Coastal Highway in Bellevue. It's also the contract purchaser purchaser of 26 Bellevue Street, which is the property we're talking about tonight as far as rezoning goes. I might, I might refer to that parcel as parcel two, because there's kind of two parcels that ultimately are involved here. And I am going to talk a little bit about what the ultimate plan is, because I think it's helpful for the community to know where we're going with it. I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that it doesn't drive the rezoning decision, but, but we have no problem with people knowing kind of what we're thinking. So, we are requesting under Section 185-73 that parcel two be rezoned from resort residential to resort business RB, RB2. So, if the rezoning occurs, the entire property, both the front parcel where Hammerheads is and the back parcel will both be RB2 at that, at that point. A little bit of background, Starboard has been in Dewey Beach for more than 60 years, and it's been really kind of the anchor property in, in the town, you know, from, from my perspective, maybe not from everybody's perspective, but it's definitely one of those properties, when you think about Dewey Beach, you can't help but think about Starboard. Then Starboard Raw opened in 2016, and that kind of demonstrated the franchise's commitment to Dewey Beach. Anybody, you know, you can't question Monty and his crew's commitment to this town and his sincere quest to promote the town as the top vacation destination on the entire East Coast. This application kind of continues that trend and that theme. This is one more demonstration of how committed to the town this group is, and how they want the town to continue to thrive and, and move forward. This, so the ultimate goal here is that the two parcels would be combined, and a restaurant called Starboard Claw would be operated there, which is going to be a seafood restaurant, serving some of the most fantastic seafood in, in this town. So, that is, that is the plan ultimately, and there's been no discussion about doing anything other than that. That's, that is what this group wants to do. As the chairman mentioned, we are in the rezoning phase. If the zoning is approved, we need to follow up with an application to do two things. One, to consolidate the lots, the parcels, and then secondly, for a conditional use application to be able to operate a restaurant at, at that location. So, when we get to that stage, as the chairman mentioned, when we get to the stage of actually consolidating the, the parcels, if we're lucky enough to get a rezoning, when we get to that stage where the parcels are going to be consolidated and, and an application is filed for conditional use approval for a restaurant, that really is the time to start talking about all of, all of those things that matter, like trash and noise and all of that. So, I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that, that is a discussion that needs to be had. It's just that we're at the rezoning phase now, and, and that discussion comes later when we, when we file a conditional use site plan application. So, the proposed zoning change would require a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive development plan amendment, because the future land use map in the plan right now designates the parcel as resort residential. But as the town zoning map illustrates, parcel two is largely surrounded by properties designated with, as resort business two, and a restaurant extension really would not be that intensive a use for that, that location. You've got bottle and cork across the street, Jimmy's grill across the street, and ice cream shops and restaurants on either side of the current Hammerhead property. Is there, is there a way that we can show the, the exhibit that we had? Just for a little bit of perspective, and this is, trust me, there's nothing scientific about this. This is kind of a rudimentary showing of where kind of the RB2 district extends back from Coastal Highway. And so our, our property right here, as you can see, it's kind of almost an anomaly in that it's, you know, not shaded red at all, and most of the properties in that, in that area are. So, extending RB2 back the distance of this property wouldn't kind of upset the balance of how the RB2 zoning district extends down Coastal Highway. Feel free, by the way, to stop me if you have questions about anything that I'm saying.
You guys clear on that? That's where, you know, where the green, where the blue arrow is and all that? Okay.
I kind of, I kind of think of this area as kind of a transition zone between, you know, the commercial properties on Coastal Highway and then the residential properties behind. And the comprehensive development plan gives kind of a description of what the RB2 district is, and it says, "The RB2 district lines both sides of Coastal Highway, State Route 1. The purpose of this zoning district is to provide a middle level of commercial development intensity in a Main Street-like, in a Main Street-like environment." And then that same purpose statement is kind of recited in the code as well, at Section 185-3. And the Starboard Claw, I think, the vision that they have really fits that definition of what the RB2 district is supposed to be, kind of that transition from that Route 1 commercial to the, to the back where it's residential. This, in many ways, and again, the zoning shouldn't be based upon what the ultimate use is intended to be, but this, I think, brings a nice transition, a much nicer transition from the highway to the resort or to the residential area than the current operation that's, that's there. So, we do think that this rezoning would promote the health and general welfare of the community. Dewey Beach has so, so much to offer, but one thing it doesn't have in that location is a really great seafood restaurant, and this would be an addition, I think, that everybody can kind of get behind and, and would be, again, something that advances the, the town. So, I just want to say again that it is my client's intention to consolidate these properties and have a restaurant operation there. There's, nothing else has been discussed. There's no other goal than to have, to have that happen. So, it's a fair concern, I think, for people to say, well, you know, wait a minute, if the rezoning happens, there's a possibility that this property could be flipped, or they could do something else that's in the RB2 district that isn't a restaurant. I mean, I, the only response I have that really is, is that my clients live and work here. I mean, Monty's been here forever, and he's got a really quality reputation that he intends to, to keep. So, you know, he's, he's an open book. He always has been. This is what he wants to do there. There's no hope or goal to do anything else, and he's going to be a really great addition to the town. So, I thank you for being attentive. We do respectfully request that you recommend changing the property from RR zoning designation to RB2, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. I don't have any questions myself. Any commissioners have any questions at this point? All right. No questions.
I'll take a seat and we'll...
At this point?
Yes.
Yeah, so now we're into the public here. Yeah. All right, so, let's go with, anybody want to make a comment? Let's go with, let's just, you know, just go by person, you know, who raises their hand instead of pluses and minuses. So, introduce yourself if you would, and what you got to say. And your address. I'm sorry. And your address. Yep.
Hi, my name, good afternoon. My name's Gary Karp. I'm the homeowner at 21 Bellevue Street, Unit Number Four.
How do you spell your last name?
K-A-R-P, S-M-P-O-L.
All right, thank you. What's your address?
21 Bellevue, Number Four. This is the seven-unit townhouse property, developed directly opposite 26 Bellevue property and 24 Bellevue property.
Yep, okay.
So, let me just start with, about, about a month ago, a number of the Bellevue Street homeowners were fortunate to meet with Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Shell, to review their vision of the property, and they listened to our issues and concerns. I know since that initial meeting, there have been several follow-up conversations from some of the homeowners with Mr. Montgomery and Shell. It's clear from their outstanding reputation in the community, the discussion we had around the rezoning and development, that I believe, and I think the consensus of the Bellevue homeowners feel that Mr. Montgomery and Shell will be, do whatever they can to be outstanding neighbors to the community. They've already agreed to accommodate several of the requests, and this is very much appreciated. So, thank you for that. With that being said, we do think, I think there are some issues that need to be discussed and taken into consideration in the potential rezoning. I do have a document that I prepared, if I can pass that out. Thank you. Mr. Karp?
Thank you.
Let me just, a quick disclaimer. I just want to say that this list was consolidated based on input from several of the homeowners. This does not represent input from the entire street, and I just want to be clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of the entire street. I'll go through it quickly. I know many of these items don't necessarily are relevant based on what was said initially in the meeting around specific zoning changes. These are, some issues would come later in the process.
Mr. Karp, we definitely appreciate the list.
So, I will, I will not...
No problem.
I won't take an hour and go through the list. So, the first item on the list is just the applicant team, just to reiterate what I said a moment ago. The quality of the applicant team, the willingness to work with the community is recognized and appreciated. The second item is around the, if there is being precedent, if there is precedent being set here. In a discussion with the town manager and assistant manager, they weren't aware of there ever being a zoning change from residential to business in the past. They do recall a few years ago that there was a zoning change from business to residential. The concern is, is there some future implication that there is precedent being set by this change that either could be used for an adjoining property to the rezon request here, or somewhere else within the Dewey community? The next couple items are really, I think, the heart of my concern. Traffic, people, and parking. The concern being, will this restaurant overwhelm Bellevue Street? The new restaurant is expected to have over 200 seats plus staff. It's going to be a large restaurant, could generate a large amount of traffic on Bellevue. You know, in addition to the restaurant, there's going to be a takeout window that's going to face Bellevue Street and could, could generate additional traffic. Bellevue's a dead-end street, so whatever cars come in have to turn around and exit the, the street. I think there's a real potential for a safety issue with the amount of pedestrians currently on the street, as well as what the restaurant will generate. The lack of parking is a concern. On a normal summer day, there's already no parking on Bellevue. The restaurant is planning on adding the number of parking spaces required by their square footage. I believe that's eight or nine spots, but it's hard to imagine that's going to be sufficient for a restaurant of this size. It's also not clear from the drawings that I've seen whether the, the parking as it's on the, shown on the drawings is sufficient to meet code, as I believe the requirement is to provide off-street parking. And we always, we already have a problem with vendor Wendy's customers where they can't find parking, so they'll double park, park in fire lanes while somebody runs into the store. And I am concerned that with the takeout window facing Bellevue, we could run into the same type of situation where, where, where Starboard Claw customers will have to illegally park. There's no bicycle parking available. In the original plans, there was no plan to provide bicycle or scooter parking. We've had recent discussions with the town manager and some of his team, and it does appear that there's going to be an ability to move forward with at least scooter parking and possibly bike parking. And I think it's, it's, it's important that sufficient bike parking is, is provided. Using Starboard as an example, I've seen times where there's over 50 bikes and scooters in there, in the area that they've provided. And if we don't have a, a location for, for the bikes and scooters in, in the new restaurant area, I just have to imagine that the bikes will just be located up and down Bellevue, locked up to whatever fence post or sign that they can, you know, get access to. And then the people part is, you know, the restaurant could generate a lot of people traffic on Bellevue. There's this very narrow sidewalk in the front of the current Hammerheads. So, I'm expecting that people waiting for tables, waiting for carryout, smokers, there are just, there's really nowhere else for them to congregate other than Bellevue Street. And again, with the potential car traffic, I just think there's, there's a real safety issue. The current parking, number six on Bellevue, there's, it's currently a very dangerous corner. It's a, it's a, it's a, there's small parking lengths, cars turning onto Bellevue, it makes for a dangerous situation. This may be resolved or partially resolved if it's, if that area is repurposed for bikes and scooters, but I will say, we need to be careful with that area if we do repurpose it, because we're still going to have cars turning into that area, and instead of a car sticking out, now we're going to have people and bikes in that area. So, I think you think we need to be careful about that. So, these are really my biggest concerns, and, and I do know that, you know, all of these areas are covered extensively in the Dewey Comprehensive Development Plan. There's specific sections that deal with overcrowding, housing, roadway, pedestrian traffic, parking, alternative transportation, and it's clear that the, that this master plan, decisions will be guided by that plan. The other items, I mean, there are concerns, there's around limited bathrooms, existing trees, noise...
But we'll get to all that in the application.
But based on what's said, I probably don't think that's applicable at this point. Just, you know, in, in closing, I don't know if anybody's seen the latest postal press, but on the front page article, there is an article about scooter and moped crashes being rampant throughout, you know, Rehoboth, Sussex County, and I just have to say that, you know, however we move forward, that whatever gets decided, that public safety has to take the top priority.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right. Appreciate that. Mr. Karp?
Hi, Iris Curtis. I'm at 10 C Bellevue. And just, just a couple remarks. You know, we've, we have had a lot of meetings with Monty. We've also talked to Bill, Town Manager, and, and some of the other town folks, which has been really helpful. You know, I've been on the street for about 10 years plus, been coming here since I was much younger than that. I think that, you know, the Hammerheads property as it is right now is an eyesore, and something's got to go there, because it just looks bad to walk into the town and see something empty. With the size of that property, it's, I think, difficult to have a viable business there. The kitchen's really small, and Hammerheads couldn't make the math work except when they had 1,000 people in there drinking until 1:00 in the morning. And, you know, when that was going on, there were people spilling onto the street at 1:00 in the morning, there was fighting, there was, you know, trash everywhere. So, you know, to go back and have another nightclub there, I don't think is in our best interest. And so, you know, for me, I would much rather have a nicer restaurant, because even people leaving at 1:00 are going to be people our age, they're not going to be the 20-year-old people presumably. So, that's my main thing. I think also, you know, the traffic is a consideration, but we have been working with the town already, because it's a problem today. And, and I know, you know, Bill and Merle Leonard met with us, are going to try to put some bike parking in those parking spaces that are so dangerous. So, you know, I think we have an opportunity to, to try to address that regardless. And then my final thing is, there's really nowhere to park anywhere in this town. It needs to be a walking and a bike town, and people have to figure that out. And so, you know, thousands of people end up inside the regular Starboard and all these other places, and somehow they park somewhere, right? So, so I think that will, will correct itself. People are going to just understand they can't park. And maybe the answer is to figure out how to have less parking in a lot at the restaurant, and people just know, take an Uber, park down the street like everybody else does, and just walk. But I think, I think that we can work with it, but I'd rather have a nice property and a nice place to go on our street, and have a decent, you know, restaurant to go to that's a little more upscale than some of the other ones. So, just my personal opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis. Appreciate it. Anyone else want to talk? All right.
I'm Doug Kennedy. I've been, I'm at 15 Bellevue Street.
Doug, how do you spell your last name?
Kennedy. K-E-N-N-E-D-Y.
15?
15 Bellevue.
All right.
Been coming to Dewey Beach for about 50 years. Just to go on record, I'm a huge supporter of this project, and I echo everything that Iris is saying. Look, there's a lot of problems in Dewey Beach in terms of parking, traffic, mopeds, things like that. And I think that this could be an excellent opportunity for the town to have a model of how we solve some of these problems. It's always going to be busy in this town. And, you know, Iris pointed out that it's an eyesore looking at the end of the street and seeing what we see down there. It has been a problem since I built my house on, on Bellevue. Woody's has always been an issue in terms of fights and parties and things like that, and we couldn't be happier to have this. Hammerheads, I'm sorry. Sorry. My apologies. Sorry about that. Hammerheads. Sorry. Sorry about that. We love Woody's, by the way. So, I just look at it as an opportunity. I have three kids, I have two dogs, we're on the streets, we're outside quite a bit. It's a mess down at the end of the street. We recognize that. Vanderwinds went in, it became a bigger mess. But I think that the communication that's happened with Toasty, with Chris Shell, with Monty, with the community and the people that live on the street, we couldn't have a better partner coming into this facility, hopefully coming into this facility, and finding a way to solve whatever problems are there, and having communication with the neighbors in the neighborhood. And, and I know Gary has a long list of things... And I know Gary has a long list of things that need to be addressed, and this is not the time probably for us to be going through all those, but the fact is, is that Monty and Chris and team have sat down with us, talked about it, and I think that we're going to find that moving forward as we go through that list, I think, with the town, we're hopefully going to be able to solve those problems and end up with a really great facility at the end of our block, so.
Thanks, Austin.
Talk favor.
Appreciate it. All right.
Sorry about that.
We're cracking.
Thank you. There should have been deals over there.
All right. Anyone else? Gentlemen in the back there?
How's everybody doing? I'm George Bellar, 1818 Coastal Highway, Hammerheads. We are giving up Hammerheads. Monty is going to be taking over the property. The reason why we are leaving that property is, we can't do anything to improve that property anymore. The landlord we currently have won't do anything with it. We can't put the money in to improve upon that. So if Monty doesn't get this operation to, you know, change the zoning, we're going to stay there, and it's going to stay the same looking. We can't put new siding on it, the landlord won't let us, we can't change the pink house. So what's, is there, is going to stay there as long as we're there, and the landlord won't change it. So this is a great opportunity to have a showcase piece in town. The other thing I want to bring, just add to the record, I am a certified planner by trade. I was the owner of the restaurant, and I just want to make a note, just to have this on the record. The 2007 comprehensive plan, that property was zoned, 26 Bellevue was zoned resort business. And that's in your 2007 comprehensive plan. And I think that is on page... It's map six of the zoning of the 2007 conference plan. So, and also, we don't always try to keep the trees clean.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much, George. Would anyone else like to make a comment? I see none. All right, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to bring it back to the commissioners here for discussion. We're going to discuss and possibly vote to recommend adoption of the above reference ordinance, which you all have a copy, and it was posted properly. It's actually technically not required to be posted, but we post it anyway because we're trying to be transparent, make sure everybody knows what's going on. So we'll consider a motion to recommend the amendment to the comprehensive plan, you know, zoning map, to revise the zoning designation from RR to RV2 for 26 Bellevue Street, and then consider a motion to recommend zoning for reclassification amendment for the 26 Bellevue Street from RR to RV2. And if somebody makes a motion, if you just follow those two, if you just, you can just do, say, both in the, as per the ordinance, attach ordinance.
I'll make a motion.
All right, so let me see, Jimmy O'Connor. Motion. Let's see what it says. Jimmy, first. What's your motion?
To change the rezoning of 26 Bellevue from RR to RV2.
Make a recommendation to change it per the posted ordinance?
Correct. Sorry.
And to change the map, right?
The map, yes.
Yeah.
The town attorney recommended that we start, then also from the office of state.
Oh, okay, so we do two motions. All right. Can you start over, Jimmy? Just read...
Can I make a motion that we amend the zoning map?
Okay. Per the Agenda Item A, 3A, right?
Yes. Yes.
Agenda item 3A. All right, so that's the first one. All right, so that's one motion.
Make a motion to consider, to recommend rezoning classification.
Hold on, we got, we got, so we got this first motion, we need a second on the first. Mr. Jimmy O'Connor?
Second.
Second is Mark Norquist. And any discussion? I have nothing to say. You got anything to say with the first motion? Mark?
No comment. Anything, so that George brought up, that it's already zoned?
No, it's currently, it's currently RR.
I can't remember.
It got changed during the...
I understand, because I don't think that we picked that up, that it was changed at 17. Everybody may think that it was 7.
Okay.
You made a comment on that. It was brought up, the comprehensive plan changed the whole town.
I recall.
It was not an individual request by a party to come and change from a resort residential to a resort business. We haven't had that. It's the comprehensive plan was amended in 2007.
Correct.
My point was, I just want to make sure that I didn't quite understand that up here, understood that it isn't already, it's been changed, that went back.
Okay. Thank you, there, Mark. Any comment?
I'm in support of the motion.
All right, I'm in support too, Jim.
The only question I have is, I know I heard everything here, they said, you know, here's the future plans for the site, and, you know, I'm not doubting what anybody says, but as we're instructed here, it's like, we're not even allowed to consider that at this point.
Correct.
So we just have to say, you know, whether we think that's appropriate to be rezoned, and, you know, and I, you know, some things I agree with, like, you know, setting a precedent on that, and, you know, I know a lot of times when people seek rezonings, they have, there have to be, you know, you tell them why you're doing it. You know, you're having practical difficulty, you know, things like that, you know, that's to do what they want to do, and I guess we're just not hearing that, and all we're hearing is, we want to change it just because we want to.
No, no, that's your, I think you're mixing board of adjustment and planning, so when you do the practical difficulty and economic hardship...
I understand that.
That's going to, you know, vary.
But still, it's, a lot of it kicks when rezonings are in place too, because you're stating why you want to do it, not just, "We want to." And I'm just, we can't consider any of that, so that's just the only thing that gives me...
You're considering changing to business, just not what business.
I understand.
Right.
Right. I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just bringing that up in the discussion here, it's kind of puts it, it's just an odd way of looking at it.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Jim. So we have a motion on the table, so we'll go take individual votes. So let's go, motion number one from Jimmy made. Jimmy, are you for your motion you had?
I'm for that, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mark, yes? Me, yes?
Dave, yes?
Yes?
Yes.
Jim, yes, so that's unanimous, that we will recommend item 3A as recommended by Jimmy Heads and the attorney in the process. So now we need a second motion. So the second motion would be per, like...
3B.
Possibly 3B, okay.
I make a motion that...
Do it again, okay.
We recommend rezoning 26 Bellevue as stated in 3B.
All right, 3B. Anybody second?
I'll second.
Dave Lyons is the second. All right, we'll do a discussion around the table, let's start on this end. Jim?
No.
Nothing?
No objections.
No comment? No objections myself? No objections?
No.
No objections, no discussion? Take a vote. Jimmy? Jimmy says yea. Mark? Yea? I say yea.
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 Unanimous again. Okay, well, that is not a problem. I'll write all this up, and that's a unanimous vote for the second motion. And with that being said, we have planning commission comments, and I have no comments at this point, other than I look forward to the application and addressing all of the concerns I heard today that are related to a possible application if they come. We're really good at that, I think, and we look forward to seeing, you know, we need to make sure we don't lose this sheet, and we do, we make sure that everybody knows what's happening when we go through this, and I think people have seen us in action, the conditions that we put on these conditional uses, if it makes it to a conditional use. So that's my comment. Jim, any comments?
No, not this time.
Dave, any comments?
No further.
All right, Mark? Jimmy?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, and make sure that we're able to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I just want to think, we have to tell the manager, explain to the public what the next step is before we go into council.
Yes, let's go ahead and, if you're okay with that, Bill, next step, just FYI. Then we're going to close the meeting, so we're not taking any more comments or anything.
And we met with several different individuals that live on Bellevue Street, and the next step is, it'll go back to the commissioners. The commissioners will consider this vote either up or down. They can take what the committee has said and agree with it, or they can disagree and deny it. If they do agree with it, then there'll be another presentation to the commissioners, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, and then in the presentation of what wants, what they want to do there on both those lots, we'll come back to planning and zoning, and then they'll start looking at what the codes are and whether they meet the actual requirements to bill what they're proposing in town. Jimmy, on this evening?
Well, you know, I think for clarity purposes, after they vote on this one way or the other, it'll go back to you all to make recommendations. And at that point, all of this discussion about additional uses and something should be brought up, and you will... And again, another public hearing will occur, and at that point, we're going to be setting, I believe at the next one, we're going to be setting... And at the same time, we have all sent notification to the Office of State Planning, and we're required to do that for an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So they have that as a discussion item, and they will vote on that, whether or not they have... That's scheduled for August 2015.
Does the, does the comp plan have to meet again?
No. No. This is the Office of State Planning, they just simply make it, they're going to review it and see if they agree or not, but let us know before all this gets finalized.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Solberg. Jim?
Put your names down, put a sign up, if you need that.
All right, so with that being said, we'll probably see you guys soon. We'll start looking at dates. I'll email you guys some dates so we can get this thing posted, just in case it goes through with the commissioners. And motion to adjourn?
Second. I make a motion when you adjourn.
Jimmy?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, have a great weekend.